Are we on, Ann? Okay. Ed, do you want to mute your screen?
Yeah.
There you go, okay. Thank you.
All right, my apologies. I'll reconvene in open session. Daughter, we have met compliance with the official notifications. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Brooke Gaskin.
Hi.
Brooke Taylor.
Hi.
Mike Meyer.
Hi.
Here.
Ed Gallagher as virtual.
Here.
And President August.
Here. At this time, would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the soul with liberty and justice for all.
All right, action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting a school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so. Comment signup sheet and handing it up to Ann. Comments should be focused on the items being considered by the board and should be restricted to no more than three minutes in length. I do have a couple up here already. So with that, we'll move into disposition of minutes from our January 9th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that, move into the report with the superintendent. First up was the Spartan showcase.
All right. So every month we recognize staff or student within our system who exemplifies being a Spartan. And so this month, we want to recognize Caitlin Knoll. Caitlin is our senior project coordinator, and I just want to read a little bit about her nomination. She was nominated by a couple folks. It says Caitlin works closely with all of our students to support them through their senior project experience. She's also building strong community relationships as she looks for opportunities for students. Not only is she coordinating all of that, but she works closely with our advisory team to make sure students' social, emotional learning needs are being met. And not only that, but her positivity when she's facing difficult decisions makes it easier for the team to see the good things. So she's much appreciated at the high school. I've worked with you as you've been in this role. You, I think, improved our senior project experience. We've received community feedback in recent years, and I think you've tried to incorporate some of those changes in. And also listening to students and how we could better support that experience. And so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin. Great job.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. So at the committee of the whole meeting on February 6th, we had a cooperative strategies presented on school capacity study completed that was completed in 2022. And I believe you've got your committees already filled.
Yeah, we had plenty of parents and staff who volunteered, so we pushed out an invitation on Friday.
Amy, what would be an invitation to have board members present at those meetings?
I guess I'd like the board's direction on that. Either someone can help me facilitate. I'll leave that up to you. That's my role in this meeting will be just to facilitate the conversation. I think it's important to note this is an advisory committee. So this committee is providing input on how we move forward to make decisions, what decisions need to be, what information needs to be considered and what feedback needs to be considered. Ultimately, it's going to be the board's decision as to what we do. So.
I would see our role if we were to attend that we'd be there as listeners, similarly to our meet and confer.
Yeah, so I'll leave that up to the board to decide how you want to participate in that process. Either be a facilitator along with me or a listener.
When was the first meeting?
February 20th. Speak from.
Monday.
What's today? Yeah, it's week from today, right? Okay. We can talk through it after this meeting, too. I mean, it's not an actionable item. Does that sound okay? I can maybe follow up in an email?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, then Principal Harrelson and Principal Liebert's shared updates from Great Lakes Elementary and Superior Middle School. Student representative Erin Johnson shared updates from the high school. Activities Director Ella Olson, she presented in adding lacrosse as a sport for the 23-24 school year. That concludes the informational items. We have four action items. First one is the board consideration of lacrosse as a co-curricular Superior High School sport for male and female athletes starting in the spring of 23-24.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to let folks know that there were a lot of questions the board asked last week. And I think Ella's tried to provide that information for the board as part of their consideration, so.
Right, and she provided some more information, too. There's been a sign up at the high school now, and there's been some kids in that, what I asked for, the nine to 11-year-olds. I appreciate the numbers that were presented to us and stuff. I did note that the numbers were in the 14U and 12U, which of course can't affect our numbers yet at the high school because we're only in a nine through 12, and that's the eligibility portion of it. However, that speaks very well for the building of the program as we move forward. Another thing that I asked Shannon for today and which I got, when we look at the total overall budget, so it's not, everybody knows we are going to be in a budget crunch for the next few years. When I look at the athletic budget, it's 1.23% of our entire budget. I'm glad to see that went up because when I was the AD, it was 0.8.
Is that why I didn't get a patch for cheerleading?
That's why you didn't, yeah. Co-curricular, exactly, everything, yeah. All of our activities and stuff, so that, you know, that's a very minimal amount of our budget and everything. You know, my mind, Ella, I'm sorry, went to, of course, being an AD and thinking sometimes of what's going on with other school districts right now and other sports. They'll combine the boys and girls on the same night, which would help with field facility. It would help with transportation if we're on the road or anything, but that's something that's in your ball court and stuff. So I just think in my passionate person that I am about this is that I'm in favor of moving this forward and stuff. And then as we as a board, as we look at how we're going to handle our budget in the future, that's up to us to take care of that. But I see this as being a minimal cost to our athletic activities program.
I shared two articles, and thank you again, Ann, for printing those out today for board members. But when we're facing a potential $4 million budget, I've been pretty straightforward that I don't think 40,000 is going to be, that's not the problem. That's not going to solve our major budget issue, and thank you for that percentage. But I think if our district is committed to mental health, if our district is committed to academic success, this is a small price to pay for our kids to have options and to stay engaged and have, you know, again, overall, the research, I sent just two studies, but there are numerous ones out there that have shown, you know, participants that are playing sports or academic, other co-curriculars have better attendance, least, less likely to skip. The professional skills and personal skills, academic careers, all of those show to have a positive impact. So the more variety we can offer our kids to get these benefits, I'm also in support. Steve.
My thing is, and thank you for putting that schedule together. But I did, I will say that you didn't include any JV games, so I don't know how that'll fit in there. Or if they have JV games.
Four to nine for games, so that would include a five to five.
Okay.
So I did block it out.
What about, I'll say, not just for instance soccer, they go at the same time. So if we're playing a five to seven JV over on the swamp. You know what I'm saying? Is we're not going to be able to go back to back all the time depending on who we're playing.
Right, I would kind of be flexible with scheduling. I mean, that's what we have to do.
All right.
We do is wrestling and boys' girls' basketball in the same area, too.
So, okay.
Yeah, that would be definitely something for a coach to develop.
Ann, other public comments tonight?
Yeah. Jen Shore.
I guess I didn't really plan to speak today, but I had sent an email because I couldn't come last week. I've never been able to attend a meeting because every single Monday night I have been a Cub Scout Den leader for the last five years on Monday at this time. But like I said, I am a parent of a child who participates in lacrosse on the club level through Superior Aerial Class. My son has been playing for the last two years and has absolutely fallen in love with the sport. The community that we have worked so hard to build and continue to build is now in jeopardy of literally becoming extinct. But you, as our school board, have the opportunity to make this existence a reality. With lacrosse now being considered a high school sport in Wisconsin, if we do not adopt this, we are essentially doing away with the club-level program as well. If kids start at a club level and have no opportunity to play beyond eighth grade, they will see no value in starting at all. As parents, we know that it's a big ask for the school board to approve this when they are going into a challenging budget. But lacrosse is a community. But the lacrosse community does and will continue to do and support in whatever way that we can with the help of the cost of it. Currently, a player like my son, who is in fifth grade, we pay $300 a year to play lacrosse, 250 if you sign up in advance. Which is, oh, what was I saying here? Sorry. Which is more than what I see as a fee schedule for any other sport that's on the high school level. I think that you need to take a look at maybe increasing your fees a little bit more to help pay for some of the cross. And I don't think that parents would object. But I also feel that there needs to be financial stuff for people who can't. So that, I guess, and also I mentioned, you mentioned that you co-op with Northwestern for other sports that have a not a big attendance out there, and I'm all for that, too. I mean, if somebody, if you have two lacrosse players that want to play at Northwestern, more people that are playing, the better. Thank you.
You want to comment on the co-op thing? Just because it's only if there's.
Yeah, so we would have to just look at enrollment from our Superior students first. And if there was a need for a couple more kids to make a team, we would explore that option. But the purpose of co-ops are to make it if we need the team to get full, right? So yes, it's always an option. I think the WA is going to come out with some co-op restrictions for lacrosse within the next few weeks. What I'm hearing, they don't want it to be mega teams. Kind of, we kind of talked about that last week, too. But so that's something as well, but definitely an option. I've not spoken to any Western families, or nobody has approached me. So that would be a fringe of lacrosse if we came to it, but it never would, it would be an option.
Right, I mean, it's just, you can't co-op just to co-op.
Correct.
There has to be a need.
Yep, yep, and it has to be a need to keep the program going, or to get the program started.
Even if you have one down year, it doesn't mean you automatically, it has to be a number of years.
Correct.
All right, next up, Brad Roden.
So I just, on behalf of the organization, just want to say thank you to the board for its serious consideration. I know last week we heard Mr. Gallagher had some concerns with regard to budgets, and I feel very bad for you people and what you're going to have to deal with. There'll be some serious difficult decisions to be made. But I think like Mr. Olson said, trying to manage that budget on a $40,000 line item is probably not going to be possible. So there's going to have much larger decisions made, and I know you're all aware of that. But again, I just want to say thank you for your serious consideration.
Jeff, is there any further comments by members of the board?
Yeah, Ellen, go ahead. So I'm just going to echo what I said last week. I'm not going to get more detail. I'm here strictly looking at the budget and the money side of things. If I support lacrosse, if I support kids playing any sport that they choose, I'm not against lacrosse. I think we have the fields. I think we can, we have great leaders that can set all that stuff up. But again, I want to focus on the budget. $40,000 is not a big part of our budget, I understand that. But every board meeting we have, just about every board meeting, every agenda has a cost to it. Whether it's having to update the PAC, having to put in new bathrooms in the high school, having to fund CSO, having to find conversation. Losing train of words, but everything we do, we have something that adds to the budget. It's 30,000 now, you know, 35,000 for CSO. I don't remember what we did for the PAC and the bathroom, but it all adds up through the year. So it really does make a big impact on the budget, in my opinion. 2.6 million deficit, up to 4.1, maybe worse. Estor funds gone. Enrollment is down, taking money away from our district. We can look at retirements in the future, but then we're looking at higher class sizes if we don't replace those people. We've got to understand that it can't all be about sports. We are a district that's about education. We want to see kids walk the stage. We've got to focus on the education as well. And we're looking at a big deficit. It doesn't make sense to me to add more budget items when we haven't figured it out. I'm fully for looking at the sports as general and whole and trying to figure out where we can save some money and or increase fees. But I think it'd be more prudent to figure that out before we add more stuff to the budget. So that's my stance on it. That's why I'm not against lacrosse. I'm against it being on the agenda right now until we can finish figuring out our budget. So that's my two cents.
Just in response, I mean, and I hear you, Ed, and I appreciate that perspective, I really do. CSO, one-time funds through ESER, that's not an ongoing budget concern. The PAC, that's building funds. So I mean, that's not, that's not money we can allocate to these things. So a lot of the things you're bringing up are issues, but they can only be funded through certain things or these additional positions. We have different budgets of money that we have to use, and I think that's Ella's job that she does quite well, given how much information you've given us in a very short period of time, Ella. I know you've got other stuff to do, and I just want to really tell you, I appreciate that. We should all appreciate the work she put in for our questions, make sure we make a good decision on this. Thinking again about like, looking at all the sports. I mean, we all have agreed that's maybe something to bring back, you know? Look at the cost. I mean, it shouldn't hurt our kids' budget, and this is something that's going to, again, be very affordable, I think, as far as the benefits that'll come. You know, given how many students sign up. So I just wanted to add like information about CSO and the building stuff. That's separate, and it's not ongoing costs.
Any other comments? Hearing none, then? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right.
I was supposed to let the folks know that they can leave.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
People want to stay?
Have fun.
Invited to stay.
I told her I discussed today. You sure?
By a friend.
Okay. It's weekend.
That was my school board member.
Questions at the last meeting, I've answered.
School board member.
All, Len.
That makes good, are you seeing sports? Girls, I'm glad you passed.
Because there are some sports that are.
Yes, I agree.
And these are popular.
Yep, got to get with.
I'm glad you said it because I was just ready to kick.
Sorry.
Already out.
Yeah. Good, yeah.
All right. Next action item, the board consideration to adopt new operating principles based on the board retreat from January 23rd, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And then a second, any discussion?
They're beautifully placed on your table tonight.
I was.
Very nice.
Remind me to show you, but I was going through like 20 years of board notes.
Oh.
And I found one back from like 19, probably 2002, 2003, where it was very similar, though we did something like that. I have to show it, I took a picture of it, so.
Here, you can. Those, Len.
My line. All right. No other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I forget about the leg. Next, administration recommends approval for the WIAA Winter Sport Co-op Agreement Gymnastics 2023-24 with Northwestern High School. And that would be it, just.
Motion through.
Second.
And then a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last, we have the consideration of an overnight field trip request from Caitlin Knoll, Superior High School, to attend Superior Days in Madison.
Move to approve.
Second.
And then a second, any discussion?
He is here to answer any questions you guys have from last week.
Thank you for taking them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any chance we could get like a little report from the kids after that?
A great idea. That would be awesome. Could we do that? When is it? Okay, so maybe in the March?
Yeah.
March board meeting? All right, we'll make a note of that.
Fun when they probably don't like it, but.
Well, we're allowing, we're paying for them, we're giving them this.
Excited about it.
Yeah. This is just another form of governance they should participate in. Yes, that's a great idea.
All right. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, Ed, by the end of the meeting, I'll remember to wait. All right, there were no discussion items. That concludes the superintendent's report. All right, moving on to the board committee reports. Teaching and Learning Committee. No action items and no discussion items, one informational item at the committee of the hall. On February 6th, 2023, Crystal Hinsman, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, provided updates on summer school and staff development. While Kate Teesch, Director of Continuous Improvement Assessment, she provided an update on the AGR goals and the 22-23 data. And Jen Willoughby, our Director of Early Childhood and Family Ed, provided an update on preschool enrollment. Entertained a motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee's report as presented.
Second.
And then a second, any discussions? None, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, Personnel Negotiations Committee, we have three action items tonight. First, the administration recommends approval of the February 2023 New Hires, Transfers, and Separations Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Second, administration recommends renewal of administrator contracts for the 23-24 school year.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, we'll get some questions.
Go ahead.
They kind of understand questions. I'll try to be broad and not be specific on anything, but there's obviously a lot of concern that was presented to us today through emails. Some guests, I'm wondering, I guess the first question is, what is the statute or legal timeline that this particular has to be approved by?
Well, it would have to be approved today because contracts have to be signed, or what is it, by the end of the month?
I'll let you talk through that.
Yep, the board letter four and ten, who has to be like the administrators by February 28th.
Did you hear that, Ed?
Yeah, I heard that. So I guess my next question is, Len, well, is there any way to work around any of the conversation that we've all seen transparence with emails today?
Well, again.
Say one thing.
You can say one thing.
Looking at Kyle, just because Kyle and I have met a couple times last week, and I feel like we have a plan. So I feel like I had direction last Friday and kind of where to go with any concerns that were raised.
Will you be addressing again the concerns, or Molly be addressing concerns to get back to people?
Yes. Talk the plan, not details, but. Yeah.
I, I don't know that I'm comfortable yet because so many emails have come in today. I think there's still a lot more questions and maybe some more specific questions that need to be asked.
Okay, well, first of all, is that accurate, Kyle, that you and Amy met and had an agreement? And SFT is in agreement with the plan?
We discussed a plan.
Okay.
So can I ask Molly, I feel like the board, is there more you can share, Molly? I feel like there's some timeline beyond that you need to share.
Well, so if we don't offer an admin contract off of this list, we would have had to have non-renewed that person by January 31st, and we did not do that. So the person in question was already under contract by the district. So if we don't renew them by February 28th, their contract automatically renews for two years per those statutes. So it probably would have helped if people would have brought their concerns forward now because this is the first time we are hearing any sort of concerns with this person.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to ask that question. Have you had any other concerns?
I have had zero.
So there have been zero concerns up until today?
Correct.
And it's important to remember the January 31st timeline. So.
I guess I have a question. Why, if there is an agreement with the teachers, did we get so many emails then? Is that truly representative of all?
Well, I think that whatever emails you got were strictly by teachers.
Individuals, right?
Yeah, individuals, they, you know, they may or may not be part of SFT.
Sure.
So that was, I think it was on the agenda, so people saw it as.
And you probably haven't had time to go back and share with our, maybe you did.
I didn't know, not really. I didn't know how much to share without saying too much.
Right. So is this list just formality then because it's already approved? I mean, because the contracts have already been given out?
Contracts have not been given out.
Okay. They'll be given out.
Not non-renewed.
Okay.
Not done.
By January 31st. So had we had concerns about somebody by that deadline, we would have been talking about it in closed session in January. Or before. But we didn't have it on the agenda, so perhaps that just didn't spark people's.
Interest.
I guess, yeah, I guess I wouldn't have maybe thought about it if I was assuming that this position would have been offered in the spring, per se.
This is, this is traditionally when we have, I don't want to say.
Well, I think to go back to the point of, but this person was already under contract. So we would have had to have, one, known about the concerns, put them on a plan to try to have them in group. And none of that happened because no concerns were ever brought forward with this person's performance until today. If that makes sense, and maybe it's because it's not on the agenda today, but we would have been offering this person a contract either way, if that makes it easier. And I just want to add that I did bring forth some concerns prior to today, but the emails came in today. Uh, but the emails, um, came in today.
Right, Laura and I, yeah, Laura and I talked about this last week.
I feel an obligation to these teachers and staff to not move forward yet. I think it's important you have all the information, I don't. And that's what I mean, and that's, I don't feel like I can vote clearly right now because I don't have all of the information.
Is there a way to remove someone?
Hang on, I, I have an idea, but I want to hear what Ed has to say. What do you, what do you, what do you have to say, Ed?
I guess it's my understanding we're already behind the curve anyhow, and should we, I mean, we have, we have to vote on contracts in general to make it legal binding. And I guess now we get this year for administration, I guess, to do what they need to do, agreements they have with SFT and agreements they have to, to work through the issue, and then we have, I guess, can bring this up again next year, next January, and make sure it's progressing positively.
Well, I mean, and I understand your point of view, and, and there is probably more information that you need to hear.
Yep.
And we can't discuss that here.
Right.
So what if, a- and we can't remove this person off this list. It, it has to get passed tonight, so what if we were to put her down as an assistant director slash director? Pass it through. We can discuss more in closed session to get more detail. And then final.
Your recommendation, Molly? Okay. Sure. I also liked.
You think I made it up on my own?
Well, I feared that, Molly, my. So I was like, doesn't sound like Len. And I, I want to make it clear that I'm not, sorry.
Right.
I'm not doubting anybody, I just need more information.
And, and that's fine, that was the recommendation, because that was the position that this person was in, so we have to at least honor that.
We have to, we have to pass it through tonight, but we can put
Either.
One or, either or, one or the other, have more discussion in closed session next month to hear more detailed information that you don't have. And then we can make an, an educated and, uh,
Yep.
proper decision after that.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
That work for you, Ed?
Yes, thanks, though.
You gonna make that movement then?
Sure. That, that needs to be an amendment to the motion.
Yes.
Len, will you make a motion?
Oh. Can I do that? So I would move that we move this entire list forward with
Molly, what, what can?
No.
Oh. That's right.
So I'm then hot.
We'll make those. I'm looking.
Oh, you could just put assistant director slash director.
For all, no, not for all, probably.
You don't have an assistant for all positions.
But we know who it is. Um, and final, I find, you know, we would just, we'll discuss this in closed session and have a final decision, uh, next month. Once we hear all of the details.
Second. Whatever that was.
I don't know.
We all, we all know what it is, just better go for it.
I have motion in a second. There any discussion on that?
Will there be able to be people in the closed session that can give us information on both? No sides of this? No, no. Okay, so it's just. I have more information that you will, that will answer that question, maybe. Okay.
I'll say you, you, you've gotten emails from one side.
Yep, and that's what I've told.
Now, now you hear, need to hear from the other side.
Yep.
So we're voting on just the amendment first, correct?
Right, we're gonna just vote on the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Are there any comments?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, thanks.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then back to the original motion about recommending renewal for the administrator contracts. We had a motion and a second on that. Yeah, who?
I believe I was second.
All right. There any, any further discussion on the original motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Last, the administration recommends releasing Melissa Husky, elementary teacher from her twenty-two, twenty-three school year contract, per her request, effective February third, twenty-twenty-three, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There were no discussion items, no informational items, so it entertain a motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Season Rules Committee has some action items, no informational items. One discussion item that the district responds to public comments about staff, including social media. Uh, we had discussed that and we were going to get recommendation was to, uh, the recommendation was to get an opinion from our attorney, Kyle Toman. I'm sure he has.
I've reached out to him. Yep.
He'll be getting us something back on that. Uh, there were no, nothing else before the committee, so it entertain a motion to accept the policy and Policies and Rules Committee's report as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
And then a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget and Insurance Committee has two action items. First, administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in the past month.
Both to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank you very much. Unbelievable, again.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we have an updated action item, a board consideration to accept Cross Anderson settlement agreement and release.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of them favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. One discussion item, and that's the second Friday of January twenty-twenty-three people count. I think there's, there's no updates, nothing, it is what it was. Um, informational items, fun, uh, fun. I'll say Shannon reviewed the Fun Ten Revenue and Expense Update last week. Trying to read my own notes.
Shannon, every once in a while, I, I, I have to request from you to see the revenue side.
Oh, is it, yeah, I think it's when I add it to the, into the folder.
Okay. And.
I'm more diligent.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I just got that. Mm-hmm. Or wait, no, it's because I'm in my other email.
And last is, uh, updated, update regarding the audit and DPI compliance. You've got that?
Yep, you have received emails.
First time I ever got one of those.
Um, our auditors are severely understuffed that this kind of substantial final audit hasn't been submitted to DPI, even though we receive the numbers as, the numbers and the numbers are not going to change. There are other things that are involved in the audit, testing, programs, tourism, whatnot. And, um, they had, they are severely understuffed behind, so I'm pretty sure they've passed submitted it. DPI and statutory requirements for whether they're supposed to submit them. Um, DPI is aware of that, I have just contacted their auditors, contacted them at the end of day, and he is hoping to wrap it up at the end of the week and get it to.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Uh, with that, it entertain a motion to accept the Budget and Insurance Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve. Second.
And then a second. Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. All right, last committee report was the Legislative Committee, had no action items, no discussion items, or two informational items uh, from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, driven down by a one billion dollar income tax cut and tight limits on property taxes, Wisconsin state and local tax burden fell in twenty-twenty-two to its lowest level on record. Local taxes as a share of income have never been lower in more than half a century of data, and state and federal taxes on families and businesses so near historic lows. Um, Governor Evers, State of the State speech highlights funding for mental health initiatives for schools, and his fifth State of the State address as governor, uh, Governor Tony Evers outlined proposals to spend nearly one point three billion dollars on mental health initiatives addressing PFAS and bolstering the state's workforce, among other things. Evers also called for a big boost in state aid to local governments and schools. In his speech, Evers noted the record state budget surplus as well as the record balance in the state's budget stabilization, AKA the rainy day fund. And these are all articles that were taken from the WASB Legislative Update page. I will entertain a motion to accept the Legislative Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Are there any other reports by members of the board? District and Program Highlights.
Uh, I just want to mention that we had a very dynamic speaker today as part of our Staff Development Day. Um, he, Brian Menler, his topic was how to connect with disengaged, um, unmotivated youth. I, I thought he was entertaining and engaging. We've had three really great speakers this year that we've been able to bring in for our Staff Development Days, and we've been able to pay for that out of Essar. Um, it's a good use of those Essar funds, because those are one-time dollars that don't impact future budget items. So I say that so that people don't expect that we always have these, uh, dynamic speakers at every, um, Professional Development Day, but we're hoping to, to bring in some in the future, too, so. I've already heard good feedback, too. About him? Okay, good. Yeah. But all of our speakers, I think, were, they all had kind of a different, uh, style. Yeah, it was good. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Consideration of Bills and Pre-approved Bills.
To approve. Second.
A motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion?
Hopefully less the snow removal coming here.
We have, we've had more than enough to start with.
I don't know what happened to it, you just.
Yeah, don't you? It's rain, rain is coming.
Our only.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Were there any other comments by members of the public tonight, Ed?
No.
Nope. All right, that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.